Thirty in time for the Wyreka City Council meeting. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all be seated. This is the time for public comment. The council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Any comments? No comments? Pretty quiet tonight. Okay, item number one. Discussion Possible Action Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from December 6th through December 9th, 2019. B, approval of minutes of the meeting held December 5th, 2019. C, acceptance of treasurer's report and budget to actual for the month of November, 2019. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as it is.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two, Discussion Possible Action, Annual Development Impact Fee Report and Updating the City's Capital Improvement Plan and Development Impact Fee Program. This is a public hearing. So, we're looking for public comments or the staff report first?
Public comments.
Public comments. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Do I have to say it three times? Any comments from the public? Chief, you got anything?
No.
Okay, okay, staff reports. Does that come from you?
I'll let you in.
Hi, Reta, you snuck in.
Sorry about that. So, this is the annual report on impact, both on the fees received from the impact fee program as well as the projects that the fees have been identified to support, just kind of over the update of affirming those projects.
Okay.
I am hopeful in by the time of next year that we'll have actually an updated capital improvement fee study to bring to you. But this year, we're still on the existing fee study. And part of the exhibits showed her some of the projects that as you kind of see in the strikeout of some of the attachments of completion of some of the projects identified from the initial study. And we're getting kind of what I call the straight through of completion or acquisition of these projects. Some supported from fees, a lot of it from supported from other sources as there hasn't been as much growth as initially expected to support some of these projects.
What is our growth level about?
Growth in population or growth in housing or...
Growth overall, yeah, population. Three percent maybe?
Not even that.
Not even that.
Not from the Department of Finance.
Isn't three percent considered normal or average?
Not to the Fed these days, no.
No, it's not.
No, they've, I don't know what their target is, but it seems lower than that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, lower?
Well, the Fed.
By one percent?
Yeah, they're, obviously inflation's been relatively low the last few years. And I can't remember if this one, does this one do the engineering news record or just, yeah?
This does do the engineering news record in the, for the index that the fee would increase by just by the fault of that engineering news record. As you recall from the program from its inception, it's been, after the first six months, it was 25% of the originally identified fee and then it remained at a 50% factor of the originally identified fee level to support growth. And so, that will also be revised.
Norm has a question.
Well, my question is, we've had no growth basically for years. And if you look at the overall development impact fee on the housing, it was over 14,000 and we're collecting quote 50% of it. Seems like if we want to encourage more housing, we should lower that fee maybe to 25% and try to encourage more building.
Well, we did that when we were first on the council, Debbie. You remember that? We actually, we actually wiped it out for a year. We said no fees for a year except for, of course, education. We have no control over schools. But all of our fees and we had what?
I thought we had two.
Two.
I thought we had two.
I thought it was one.
Yes, the experiment, I can't remember the name of the program right now, but the council did approve essentially that concept. And we did have two projects go through. One of them was on purpose. They had, they heard about the program and they decided to build the house. The other one was accidental. They came in with less than 30 days to go on the program and we said, "You qualified for this." And they was like, "Really?" So, it really only influenced one.
But that's a 50% improvement.
You can look at it in a variety of different ways.
Yeah.
And our, our discussion at the time is that the other market forces that impact particularly home building up here are significantly greater than what our development impact fees are at. So, that was why we did a pilot program to test it out. And it had, depending on how you look at it, a relatively minor impact. We haven't had single-family growth here though since 2000 and, well, certainly since '10, I know that.
Well, I know of two significant sales that happened just this month. Two, they're, both of them are up at the other end of town. Those two big houses.
Right.
They both sold this month.
Existing houses?
That's not new building.
Well, no, no, one is a new building. Nobody's ever lived in it that Tom McCullough did.
But it's that for a long time.
It was on the market for over a year, maybe, or that, but it had never been lifted.
But that, I will say, I don't think is from, that's not, I've worked with Tom, I respect Tom, he's a great builder. He does a great job, but that's not necessarily because of the, of fees. That's because of the amount of money that the property was being sold for. And what you're getting is you're getting the retired people from Southern California, I mean, Redding South by Southern California. And they're, they sell their house down there when they make a killing and then they come up here, you know? And they buy something here and just re, you know, redo what they're gonna redo.
What I've noticed is a number of people that have jobs here have go, had to go outside the community to buy a house. And I think we really should encourage housing. I'm not, I don't think we ought to reduce it on the commercial side but just on the housing side. That would be my feeling. The other, the other question I have with Reta is, on attachment three, have interest allocated of $6,751? That's got a footnote number four, interest earned but not payable on corrupt development impact fee receivable pursuant to enter governmental agreement.
That's correct.
When will we receive those funds?
We did receive it in August of 2019, about $660,000.
Okay.
Six hundred and sixty thousand. And that was the fifth year, the five-year anniversary of execution of the IGA.
Okay, so that's, that's cleaned up. The other thing is on the resolution that would pass this, you go down to the bottom on the back page and this is the paragraph before the end. It goes, "The city manager is authorized to initiate any loans between fee accounts that may be necessary during the next review period for the purpose of funding the construction, the improvements discussed in the annual report." Now, will this come to the council? Because supposedly you're able to adjust things between accounts if it's under 25,000, I think that's what we understand? Or does this give you blanket authority to adjust everything without even letting the council know?
Yeah, that wouldn't be good.
I don't, I don't use that authority very often if, I don't remember using it, but I probably have on something where, but typically, actually, maybe I haven't. Have I used that authority? It seemed like that we...
I think there was agreement that was entered into with the Church of the Nazarene prior to your coming onboard. It is in the ordinance, if I recall that, that, you know, the payments for the diff can be structured with concurrence of the council on that. However, in the intent of this, that he can facilitate part of fees, you know, being paid over the course of the construction or at the end of the construction period if somebody needs to finance those fees.
Is that, is that the question you were asking or is the question different than that?
Well, it says authorized to initiate loans between accounts.
So, for example, I, and I don't, I don't remember if this happened because it was, it's long enough ago and, you know, the weekend intervened. But at one point, the property up by the tennis courts in Meyer Street Park came available. Name was called Woody's House. And that was something that the city had looked at for a long time to kind of complete that park. So, we bought that. If we had enough money in the parks fund, we bought it right out of the, it's not even called the parks fund here, right? It's called community facilities or?
Yeah, community facilities.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, so if we had enough money in there, we would simply do it out of the public facilities fund. However, if we didn't have enough money in the public facilities fund, we could borrow from one of the other funds to buy it when it's for sale because it was for sale because of, of the owner's death and then repay it over time. That's the intent of, of it. I don't remember using that. I, I can't remember if we used that authority on Woody's House. It seems to me we did.
Smokey's.
Oh, it's not? Smokey's House, I'm sorry.
Smokey's House.
All right, I'm blowing all you guys away. So, it's Smokey's House, thank you.
Smokey Purchase?
Yeah.
But did you bring the purchase of the property in front of the council? In which case, they were kept in the loop.
The purchase of the property came before council, yes.
It's always required, there's a resolution required for the recognition of the...
So, so I would tell you that, A, if I use that, I'll let you know. That's, that's the kind of thing that we do.
You'll let us know that you intend to use it, right?
Well, I intend to use it because, yeah. Usually you would know about the project anyway.
Right.
Interestingly enough, we, I don't think we emphasize how the public facilities fees are used or really talk about how the, and we probably ought to have a workshop on that some, at some point. Tonight's not the night for a lot of reasons. But, but for example, there's some money that was available to help out with the police station. Not very much money, but a little bit. And, and so those things happen. I don't know that we do much more than, than sort of show it in a financial report for the most part, but we do spend some of this fee. So, it's, it's not like we're just accumulating charges of, that people are building houses and not using. We are using.
So, we're only charging 50% of the full demand.
Did I get the question right? Closer to right than that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thanks.
So, I just got another question too in conjunction.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's all talk together.
Well, my fault.
Do you have a question that you need to bring out or?
Yeah.
Okay, well, bring it out.
So, so I want to clarify. Currently, we only charge 50% of the developer fees that we could. Correct?
Yes.
That is, of the ones that have already been adopted, yes. There's some other developer impact fees that we would look at if we were doing the full bore.
Do we currently correct a sewer fee?
Yes.
We do?
No, we don't, no.
Oh, wait.
Sewer drainage.
Sewer or drainage?
Sewer.
Yeah, that's a...
Storm, storm, do we?
You've got storm drains.
Storm drain.
I'm thinking of sewer like...
Well, it's my fault, my fault.
But it's wastewater, I can't remember. It's wastewater treatment we collect for but not wastewater collection.
It's wastewater collection, not treatment.
Not treatment, okay.
Just the opposite of that.
And, and we can collect for wastewater treatment, correct?
Storm drains, right? Is that the storm drainage or is that sewer?
It's on attachment number one.
Oh, I'm on three.
I guess I shouldn't be reading this.
To clarify on that, the, in the study that was adopted, the, did not include the wastewater treatment plant impacts of growth. And that's why in the IGA agreement, there was consideration of that for an in-lug fee because it was not formally identified in the development impact fee report that was originally issued.
And storm drainage fees?
Pardon?
I'm sorry.
Was that a mistake?
A mistake of the original...
That wasn't identified on that original...
At that time, there was not really a master plan that identified growth, growth-related infrastructure needs. Subsequent to that, a master plan was developed called, for the wastewater treatment plan. And I, you might remember the years on that, but, and, and that is also what happened. And I think this is your second question on the storm sewer collection system that the development impact fee report was developed prior to having the master plan impacts of growth that, that identified growth for the storm sewer system or storm drainage system, whatever it's called, different things.
So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
And that's why we do...
We're not realizing our full potential of what we, we're not even realizing half of what we could collect. I'm just looking at it and I'm not, I'm very conservative. I'm not a tax and spend, but, you know. Our, our issue, and I agree with Norm, we need more homes here. But our issue in, here in Wyreka is jobs. It's not housing, it's not, it's, 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 the number one thing is jobs. We, you know, we don't have any, we don't have the high-paying jobs. A high-paying job is 12 bucks now in Wyreka.
Pretty much.
And until we can bring in the jobs, we're not going to bring in the housing.
Absolutely right. So, I, I got a question on the...
Thank you, Dwayne.
Water impact fees. So, that's based on that $6,800, 683529, I see that one.
Right.
And that's equivalent to, on the chart, it says for household development ratio, one, is that correct? So, the impact fees, water impact fee, I don't know what page I'm on.
So, are you talking to, it says single family at the top of the page?
Single-family dwelling, this one.
The R E, whoops.
Or are you on commercial office?
Well, that was commercial, relax. So, we can go to...
You're on commercial?
Let me go to, I can go to single family.
Okay, the first one is single family, then commercial.
Go back to single family there.
Are you looking at the worksheet?
There we go. Same old family, there we go. 683529 or that. Now, that's, anytime you're building now, that's the 5/8. Is that based off that number one ratio? So, that's 6835 is based off number one. So, then you go down to what you'd have to do for new construction nowadays because 5/8 isn't big enough for sprinkler systems and stuff. So, now it's going to be a higher ratio, correct?
We recognize that the new regs are three-quarters, so it's still that rate. But remember, that rate would be half of that because we only implement 50%.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because, yeah, because of it.
So, it would be about 3,400 and if you came in today, that would be about 3,400. And we recognize that you need a three-quarter inch for your fire suppression.
For the sprinkler systems and stuff now.
And that, that's a new norm for a single family.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't...
This is going to have to get jacked up for people because of...
Right, no, we did consider that a while back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
And I have one on attachment one. Second page of attachment one, down on table 4.5-1. There, right at the bottom, it says intersection improvement at Minor and Oregon. Didn't we cover that when that was repaved? Any, any of that cost?
There, no, not all of it was covered.
So, we're going to have to dig into, cut through the pavement again to do more?
Not necessarily intersection improvement, but more along the lines of pedestrian, the crosswalks.
So, it's above?
The, the curb returns for the, if you can picture it, standing at the, in front of the new Larry and Kerry's building.
Brick building.
A brick building there. Forgetting the name of the business right now. But if you look out into the intersection, the sidewalk, ADA letdown right in front of them isn't, was not upgraded and neither was the, I think, the other side.
Okay, are we still within compliance with state?
We are in compliance with the state.
Okay.
Okay, may I ask one more?
Sure.
On table 4.2-1.
You're treating, right?
Yes, I'm going backwards.
Just checked it.
Hey, works for me.
Yeah.
Down on the landscaping and irrigation, the amounts are exactly the same. Is, is that a combined, combined amount or is it really exactly the same amount of money?
217,800, twice. That's it, that is interesting.
Well, we'd be irrigating the same amount that you landscape, right?
Yeah, but the cost isn't necessarily the same.
Well, cost of water is different, right?
Well, irrigation would be, that would be the system, not the water.
Oh, just...
It would be the piping or...
Right, right. And it was probably a bundle of 50 of, I, I have to go back a while on that original study, but these were the tables out of the original study. I guess it might have been split 50/50 between each.
Probably.
And if you, if you notice, there's some significant rounding in here.
There's a lot of zeros there.
Yeah.
Well, just because when you're doing this level of study and you're looking at literally in some cases decades, you're, you're doing an order of magnitude. And then what we try to do is take these numbers and we're actually increasing, you know, as, as time goes on, the numbers, the costs will increase. And that's what we try to do by increasing by the engineering news record is to increase those things. But these don't get updated every year.
Basic neighborhood park average cost estimate. So, it's an estimate.
I was just hoping it was doubled by mistake.
1.9 million, 1.9 million total.
It probably was done that way, but they're just sort of...
Any, any other questions? Or, Reta, you want to continue?
I was just going to add, I will be working with the Audit Investment Committee, if that's the pleasure of the council, to art, issue an RFP to look at updating the fee schedule during the coming year. Kind of reflect more current costs, more updated master plans that are now public works as available and/or projects to, as well as the firms that assess what expected impacts to growth might be on our community. And certainly will involve, you know, feedback from the council as well in that.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good.
Questions answered? Okay, then, is there more or shall we go to the resolution?
That was all I had, I think.
Oh, okay. Are there any other questions before we discuss the resolution?
Actually, I'm a little lost as to whether or not the council is considering dropping the fees more or staying with the current 50% off.
That's why we have to discuss it before we have any action on it. So, what are the wishes of the council?
Well, the proposal was keeping everything, everything the way it is right now.
The way it is, yeah.
That's, that was my understanding. Was there, I'm the only one that asked a question about raising it, but I didn't, I'm not putting it on the table, I'm just asking.
Well, you wanted to raise it and he wanted to lower it.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not putting that on the table tonight, okay? That would be for future years.
Yeah, for clarity, this is a, a report that's required annually. So, if there was, if there was a desire to look at the fees, then I think that the method that Reta's talked about, probably talking to the Audit Investment Committee first and talking about some of that and then probably having a workshop.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
And then, I mean, so it's, it's a lengthy process. And there's also some significant notice requirements as well that we would need to go through before we looked at that. So, all we're asking you tonight really is to review and accept the report.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that, Norm, because we're going to, you and I are going to get to, we'll get to, we'll get to talk about it again and then, and then the council will talk about it. So, yeah. Yeah, and it'll be good for Norm and I.
So, so this is required by what, the state of California?
Yes.
Okay, so we know that there's a requirement by, it looks here, no, December 6th was in 2007. So, we need to do this in December, is what you're saying?
We, we schedule it in December. It's due in December? I can't remember if it's due.
It's due within 180 days of your hearing close.
There you go. So, December 20 something?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't closed the hearing yet. We opened it for questions, right? I don't think I officially closed it.
Actually, you did close it.
I did.
You moved from public hearing to staff.
I did, but I didn't, I didn't...
You did a good job.
No, thank you. It was an accident.
We compliment you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so what are the wishes of the council? You've taken a look at it? What do you think of the resolution and where we go from here?
Well, I think we just, we have to approve the resolution.
Yeah.
I think we do it as a matter of...
Is that a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution of the annual development impact fee and report. Adopt resolution approving the development impact fee report and updating the city's capital improvement plan and development fee, impact fee program. I'm sorry.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2019 dash...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, thank you, ma'am. To approving the development impact fee report and updating the city's capital improvement plan and developing impact fee program. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So, then the Audit Investment Committee will take a look at that.
We'll take that as our action.
And Steve, and go forward. Okay, great, thanks, guys. Okay, we are at city manager and staff reports. Nope.
Nope, you got one more.
I do?
Yeah.
Discussion Possible Action.
Item three.
Yeah, item three is city manager and staff report. Yeah, item three is city manager and staff report.
Yeah, that is us.
Presentation, you're right.
ADA and city hall remodel.
Yeah, that's exciting.
No, you're item three.
Item three, you are. Oh, Cindy.
So we're gonna, as usual, we're gonna set up the AV and she'll, she'll do that. While we're doing that, I'm gonna take the opportunity to say two other things.
Okay.
We'll just keep going. One is, uh, you already know this, so this is the, in fact, you know everything on here now that I think about it maybe, but, uh, there is not a January second meeting.
Right.
It is possible that we will, uh, need a, a special meeting in there. And if we do, it'll probably be the following weekend, we will be tracking you down, uh, at that point. So that'll be after the, you know what, they've got it up? I'll, I'll sit to the second one after, because it's bird's eye control.
If they did, if they're, if they did require a special meeting, it'd have to be the ninth or something.
The ninth was a target date that we talked about before.
If we have to, yeah.
Okay, so the, the second is canceled.
The eighth is our Lola meeting.
I know, the eighth is Lola, League of Local Agencies, and-
I couldn't work on a ninth.
So chief, you should go with us to the Lola dinner because other chiefs from other cities go sometimes. This one's in Mount Shasta.
I'll personally introduce you to Lola.
Jeez, there is no Lola. That's League of Local Agencies, anyway. So that's the eighth and the ninth you're talking about? I don't have anything down, so, oh yeah, I do, I have city council workshop with a question mark.
Yes, see, we, we kind of telegraphed that, like I said, you might already know this. So I'm gonna go ahead and defer to, uh, Public Works and, and Finance to talk about the, um, city hall ADA restroom remodel project update. So we're a short PowerPoint.
Very clear.
And, uh, some information for-
Evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. As you know, we want to update you on the city hall ADA restroom remodel project. Just to refresh you, in May, we did public hearings for CDBG to try and find projects that could use the CDBG funding.
And, and for people who may not know what a CDBG is, it's a Community Development Block Grant. Right, thank you.
And in June, we put in our applications for two projects, both were approved.
Oh, good.
And that did, that happened in November and September. In July, we submitted some preliminary concept drawings that Guy Fryer very kindly made for us. And we received official approval in November. And these are conceptual three D. Drawings done by Guy Fryer, this is city hall today, obviously, very familiar.
It doesn't change much.
Where's the bathroom?
Blackboard is different direction, yes.
Right. We have the city hall of the future.
Oh, okay. Look at all that glass.
That looks nice.
It's very nice.
Yeah, it really does. It modernizes it.
Yes.
Very nice.
Changes the whole shape of it, it looks nice.
Yeah, gives us a lobby as well as that conference room. There's, oh, that looks nice.
See, it's enclosed.
Very nice.
This would be from the lobby and that would be the window with the lower counter.
That's a bathroom.
Get things closed off so that people can't just walk in.
That window, if I could interject, you go back just for a second. Just so that they're on the same page. That window is actually installed in the double door area, that's the front of the city right now. If you can't picture that, so the windows down the side, um, you can see those from Steve's office, which is just to the left side, just out of screen to the left.
Yeah.
So his, his window stays-
So the doors are on the side?
Right.
To go in? And that window is there for like what, bulletproof, like what the chief has?
That'd be the new front counter. Instead of coming into the lobby and hitting it.
So there's glass there? And what, like a thing to speak through?
Conceptually, yes. There, so because it's conceptualized, we've talked bulletproof, we've talked closed down emergency panic button, stainless steel, we've talked all, all, but that's the window, so to speak.
Okay. And back, go back again.
Sure.
So where's the bathroom? I see the window and there's also, suppose we talked about having a small conference area, conference room.
Restrooms would be to the right of screen.
Okay.
And there are two, I think they're both, I, we didn't bring the floor plans, I have them, but I'm not gonna go through it. They're about twelve by twelve foot restrooms, there's two of them off to the right.
Okay.
So there's two.
So we'll go out here and we'll still have stairs?
There will still be stairs, yeah.
So you go down into the lobby?
Correct, or you go out this door and you're actually inside.
Oh, that door, oh, okay.
So the ramp will be, still where it is, but enclosed.
I'm just gonna go back to the second slide, which was the new, okay, go to the third one, actually. That's a bird's eye view from up over there, looking down. And so the, um, this door here. This door here is right here.
Oh, okay.
So it's fully enclosed.
You still see the office windows on the business here, yeah.
Very nice.
But you could leave the council chamber and use the restrooms.
Or go over to the conference room, come back, maybe. It's good, it's good.
We have a project estimate done by our city engineers, if people wouldn't know, there's a great passage down. There's printing on both sides. And we have a total that pays gave us approximately nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for the entire project. That's excluding commissure.
Look at the square foot price, holy moly.
What is it a square foot?
Six, sixty-seven?
Oh, there it is, six, six hundred and sixty-seven point sixty.
Holy moly.
Square foot, that's average for new construction in, if you are building a department store, a bank, seven hundred dollars would be high and three hundred and fifty will get you the bargain basement, steel building with nothing on the outside and nothing on the inside. So that's not out of, and I'm amazed because I'm going through this with another entity in town and that's-
Oh, yes, you are, building and building.
And this is, uh, not at all out of, yeah.
This is current rates, current rate.
Yeah, that's, that's not at all high. I, I mean, it's high for us, but it's, it drove me crazy when I first looked at ours.
And, um, if you'll recall, we already have five hundred thousand dollars for the program income on the CDBG program. That is, that they've allowed us to use for this project.
Right. And then where will the rest of it come from?
Well, I think Reda had some.
Well, I think we, um, there's some various funding sources, as I mentioned. One, it's kind of timely in the DIF there, there was, um, improvements to city hall as one of the identified projects within the DIF that could be a component because when the peruk, um, tribal money came in, that was a large, um, different receipt of about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So part of, some could come from there. Um, we also are receiving, um, some repayment on a building loan, um, for the old NorCal building.
Oh, okay.
That's been accreting, um, some revenue sources.
That's true, yeah, because it sold.
And then finally, um, part of this is for benefit of our customers. And a lot of times, if you recall, most of our customers are, I would say, the majority of the customers that come through are utility customers. And so I would expect that enterprise funds to also kick in a fair share. Um, and they have fee revenue and reserves that they can also kick in. So kind of when you divvy up the pie, although it, it sounds like a lot, I think we can identify the various sources without really, um, adversely hitting the general fund for this full, full price tag. But again, that's something kind of, you know, when we get direction on that and get this all hung down, we can work on, you know.
Next step.
Next step in sources.
Right.
What kind of timeline is this to?
Well, interestingly enough, we were just talking about the next steps. Obviously, there are a few more steps to go through with CDBG funding, the, um, general conditions checklist and everything to submit to them. We have a potential project timeline here, as you can see.
That's kind of tough to see.
We're getting close.
So, um, can we just run through those that?
Right.
We'd look at coming back to you, uh, early next year, February, March, and start talking about trying to get your authorization for design, request for proposals. And then, all of this is conceptual. It always worries me with timelines because things can change so much, but you guys are used to that by now. April, May, um, somewhere in there to try to, to award the design contract, if we're able to do that. Um, and then winter of twenty, probably try to put it out to pitch. And then, um, in twenty-one, award, uh, the construction contract and then run the construction contract, uh, through, um, twenty twenty-one. And that's a, that's a conceptual schedule. So that, because I didn't actually call up Norman and ask him to ask that question exactly that time, so your timing is accurate.
Perfect.
So.
Good timing.
Uh, so we did want to put, you know, what it looks like is, you, uh, and, and this also, um, this is a, a, a pretty good timeline for doing the project as long as we're not juggling too many other things. But as you know, sometimes we are juggling too many other things. In fact, we feel like we're always juggling too many other things and, uh.
Yeah, we got the Main Street project and other little things like that.
Small, small little, uh, details, but we're trying to, we're trying to get to where these projects can, um, we can decide which projects to do and then focus on trying to get projects done and through. Because I, it's frustrating for all of us in terms of the timing, always is. And, but to focus on that, and that's what the schedule reflects, is to see whether we can, you know, get it on that timeline. But we then need to match, um, projects to staffing, uh, we talked about funding already, and then the available market and that sort of thing, so.
To me, the sooner the better, to be ADA compliant is, for me, is huge, always in place.
Absolutely.
I mean, I do, I don't like the idea that we don't have the ADA complacency in this building, so.
Well, we kind of do, we can come around through this door, but still, you're right, it's not-
Well, not this door, I know, I'm worried about still there. When they go up there, there's nothing really for them, wheelchair accessibility is not really there, so.
So we've, we've known about this for a while and we've tried to figure out a way to do it. That was what your action was, um, last, um, spring, I guess.
By your fault.
Whatever that was, to, to start putting together the money to do those ADA improvements. There are some other things that we're, we're thinking of, for example, did we actually order it today? The, the-
I think Lusana may have it today or tomorrow.
So either today or tomorrow. There's a, a podium, uh, that you can adjust up and down so that if there's someone who's in a wheelchair or who needs to sit down while making a presentation, should be able to, to, uh, make it go up and down. And I didn't expect to be talking about that tonight, but, uh, but that, so there are things that, where we're trying to do it. This is obviously a big project until we assembled enough, enough funding to do it. And then when we did assemble the, the funding for the CDBG program and looked at, and I gotta give credit to, um, Matt to my left here for looking and saying, how can we make this into a project that really makes sense long term for the city? Not just the basics. And, and I think, I think we've done a good job there. I know that we're, we've identified, you know, various funding sources and we gotta match them all up. But we think it's a, a pretty good project and, um, you know, we'd like to move forward. We've got the CDBG funds in place and there is, you know, they'd like to see us proceed on a certain time schedule. Anytime you get outside money, they want, they want their stuff done, so.
So here's a question I know that Norm's gonna want to ask, what about the solar part?
Oh, solar, yes.
The what?
Solar.
Norm wants to see solar power.
Yeah, solar.
I know it's gonna be a question, so I'll just ask it for him. Is that gonna be part of the project?
In, in late afternoons, you can definitely come and, and, and heat up over in the atrium.
A lot of additional thermal mass in this concept, um, it'll stay warmer. Now, the solar is not part of this one million dollar, almost number. I would expect that to be a considerable, um, a sizable project. And what we've talked about, the staff level is to, to look at, um, not only can we put it on the roof, um, maybe we should put it out in the parking lot. And then when you look, you put it in the parking lot for, for parking structures, right? If, if we were to do it here on this parcel at city hall in the Chambers Center.
Gives you shade there, too.
What really makes the most sense. And so in, um, my research, I feel it's, it's better left to be a separate project. Um, it would slow this one down to a point that it may not hit. And knowing that this is not a perfect timeframe out here, this is just something on, on a page that we could show with you, show to you. Um, we feel it's as accurate as we can with the data that we have right now, but to add, solar's a whole nother project.
Right, no, I get it.
I should have just said that.
I just know it was brought up, Norm actually brought it up.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would work by the roof between the two buildings.
No.
Because you got shade here from them.
Right.
It's just not gonna be the, the best position to get the solar.
And the angle.
Right, that's what I meant, the angles. So I mean, building something out in the parking lot where it's covered and people can park underneath the solar structure makes more sense.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's a definitely-
Yes, it'd be nice in the summer.
Yeah, that would be nice.
The other thing I was gonna point out, um, not to, not to belittle the, the six hundred over, almost seven dollars a square foot, but we, California is a subject to the little, what they call the Little Davis Bacon Act. The Davis Bacon Act, uh, was passed, how many years ago? Forty, fifty years ago? And I think we have what's called the Little Davis Bacon, which is, we have to pay the prevailing wages. Which then the difference between, say, this job and say, you know, it, it got, you know, say, uh, when NorCal put in is that they're paying forty-five bucks an hour for an electrician, we're paying ninety bucks an hour for an electrician. So we're, we're doubling it, yeah, so that does drive it up a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Probably, probably about twelve, fifty percent, yeah.
Prevailing wage, which means we have to pay like what they pay in the Bay Area.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
It's, yeah, I think they called, I think California's called the Little Davis Bacon. I think we're one of the thirty-two states that's modeled, we're modelers after Davis Bacon.
Yeah, typ, there's sometimes a slight difference in, in what the calculations are between the feds and the state, but generally, they're using the same, uh, data.
Yeah, but we have a prevailing wage for government jobs, which really, as soon as people see the word government, they go, oh, and they see stars.
These will be federal dollars we're using, so everything follows the federal.
So it is subject to Davis Bacon Act then?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have anything else?
Thank you.
Can you do your math?
I like the look of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks really nice.
I like the look of it.
I like the modern look.
Actually, I gotta tell you, one of the, the, um, aspects of this design that appeals to me is the fact that it, it looks clean, nice lines and everything, but it's not over the top.
Yeah.
Which I don't know about the rest of you, we have to explain when we have silver handles and, yeah. So that helps me a little bit.
Well, it's gonna get people out of the weather to pay bills, and you're gonna have more room for people to pay bills. You're gonna have a little more office space, it looks like, not much, but maybe another three hundred or four square feet. In, in, you know, what, what, and, I mean, I just, I think it's, looking at the inside. Yeah, it looks nice, plus the restrooms are fabulous.
Well, all of it, and plus it's much bigger. I mean, when, when was the last time anything was done on city hall?
I've lived here since eighty-six, I don't know.
There was an addition, right?
Forty years.
Reda, uh, my office, I believe, was in addition to the original, not too long after the build, but it was.
So I think that we've been very careful in the past and, and now it's the, I mean, we've outgrown it, it's time.
Those two offices on the end were added after I started at Jackson Street because the city worked with, because of the way the property here was school property and, you know, and everything, the city worked with, I know, with our district in order to, you know. And they matched it perfectly, it looked, the offices looked great when they added them on. Oh, yeah, they look great.
It's a little pink. The brick's a little pink.
But that's probably thirty years, I would say.
I would, yes.
It's gotta be, yeah.
Because I've been here thirty-four, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
So, we're planning to keep sort of proceeding down the line, and we wanted to make sure that you had an update and knew where we were going and what the intent was. Uh, and, and then, you know, we'll, there are many more steps to go, but this is, this is where we are.
Good. Okay, so there's no, uh, no action tonight, this is information.
Right, if there was an action, it would be to slow us down, if we're headed in the wrong direction, and I'm, I'm not sensing that.
We don't want to slow you down at all. We'd like to speed it up a little.
The, the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, that be, and they set up so fast, I, I stopped, but, was that, uh, as you know, the pool grant, uh, we were originally supposed to know in December, they said early next year. Early next year means a lot of things to a lot of people, but, uh, so we don't know exactly when it's coming.
We don't have a date, right Cindy?
No. Uh, but I did want to let you know the group that, um, helped put together the pool application. As I said, they're, they're getting the band back together again. And, uh, they're working with us to schedule some, uh, public meetings in late January. There's no real information out on that yet, but we'll get that to you, um, when we, we get it. But I did want to, and they're, they're looking at a, uh, well, you know what, we'll just wait until they send out the, the stuff, rather than stealing their-
Getting the band back together.
And we're talking about having the meetings at, um, the community center.
The community center, right, and we're working with them to have the meetings, and I think it's like the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, but we'll, we'll get some flyers.
Right, and hopefully by then we'll have an answer on the grant. You know, we're waiting with bated breath.
Right.
Don't, don't.
We'll see. Will have to be noticed if more than two council members-
Oh, yeah, we'll still have to know this.
Sure, I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with, um, doing that.
And sometimes we do and sometimes we don't.
The most infuriating thing for me ever in thirty years of education is that all my paperwork was due by this date and they were due to get back to us by this date, but that date turned into three months later, six months later, eight months later. But that was okay, I had to have my stuff in on time.
Tough to think of, yeah, but, yeah, we don't know the, we don't know the date.
But we're hoping that we'll get a positive result.
Yeah, January's everybody.
Sometime early to mid-January, but we don't know for sure, they just said sometime early next year, right?
That's right. And that's all I have, uh, you, uh, after you do the, uh, your report, we will go into closed session.
Okay. Alrighty, so who wants to go first, Paul?
I'll go first and I'll keep it quick. Oh, truck stop has a sign up now, says April twenty twenty opening. Think I text, did I send you a picture or no?
I, I, I know you were going to, I don't even remember.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's all right.
Um, I talked to, I won't mention names, but Chevron is starting up again.
Oh, good.
They're still waiting on getting, um, something from the state for egress and ingress, but they're starting on other stuff now.
Right.
They're gonna be pouring concrete through the winter.
I know.
That's always the best time to pour concrete, when it's seventeen degrees out. Don't do it when it's ninety. Um, and the wiffle ball field, is it totally done?
What?
The wiffle ball field, the Rioque, it was a senior project.
Right.
I was wondering, because I see there's gravel, but has anybody heard anything on it?
Yes, um, Ben Miller, your maintenance operations manager, and I spoke to the, uh, folks. There's, there's a, a, a number of folks working on it. So, um, we made a phone call, I believe, two weeks ago to make sure that that thing's moving and off-center. They've had some weather delays, um, and then they've had some delays caused by the, the underground contractor We've had some weather delays, and then they've had some delays caused by the, the underground contractor that's volunteering his time to the project.
Okay.
Busy, and then we're busy and in weather and weather and busy and windows and such, so it's moving.
Okay.
Moving slowly, but.
And then the last thing I wanted to do, and I think the, the board of the city will be happy about this, is that I have noticed that one of the homes that was pink, that was moved from over here and is up behind Gold Street School on Correa's old, that L-shaped harbor that Correa used to own, one of those homes, he is, he's put the foundation under and now he's putting the stem walls in. Still hasn't moved the, there's a second piece.
Second story.
There's still a second piece that goes on, but he's working on it, he's been working on it every day, because it's just two blocks down from us. So that's kind of a, a nice thing, just so, so if you guys haven't seen it, that y'all know.
We approved that, what, two years ago, and it was moved during the holidays, I think, two years ago.
Well, and you guys did it in, in good faith, you, you guys did it, that, that council, and, and I think it was a good thing. And I live in the neighborhood and I get asked all the time about it, but you know, he's working on it. He, he is working on it, so, you know. And I want to thank you for a wonderful year with all of you, every, you know, everybody that's on the council and then here at the city. And, and I do appreciate your collegial self as well as your friendship, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. You can't leave yet, though.
No. I'm going to the table or sneak out the back. Norm's going to push me up the back.
Uh, the only thing I have is, the Board of Supervisors was supposed to consider that polyethylene burn pile cheap thing.
They put it off.
And they put it off now, it looks like till the twenty-first of January, so I'm planning to go to that with some of the people with the virus aid council. They just delayed it almost two months.
Is it twenty-first of January?
January twenty-first.
They're meeting, I hope that.
Oh, yeah, that's the second Tuesday, uh, that's the third Tuesday. Oh, my, yeah, I saw that.
They've got a little bit of controversy on their plate right now they're working through, so I can see why they're focusing.
They have a lot of.
Yeah.
They even have more than we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
By far.
No, that's it. If I could just add on to that, there was, at least some people who were confused about what was being considered. It's, and as you know, because we talked about it, the burn piles are basically Forest Service burn piles. It's, it would not apply to burn piles within the city, and anything like that, so anyway.
We're just showing our support.
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify that, because there was evidently some concern that we were going to start letting people burn plastic inside the.
Oh, no.
It's like, no, that's not the idea. It's really the burn piles for burn suppression.
Some people might yell.
I thought we'd get rid of our straws.
I just lit up a ton of it the other day, come on. Is that where the cops came by?
Oh, there was no CTC meeting this month and no LAFCO meeting this month, and that's it. Merry Christmas.
Oh, my, nice month, okay, yeah, Christmas.
Yeah, I've had so much time off.
All right, what do we ever do with the?
Oh, I must say, I'm just going to be glad to have a, a day off here next week. Much needed, and we'll have, in January, we have the point in time count, so I'm just reminding anybody that wants to step up to the plate. It's going to be a little bit trickier this year to achieve the point in time count, just because we don't have a shelter. And so they're going to be all scattered.
We got our numbers last year.
Do you need to book the center?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
Do you have a date?
It's February.
No, it's, no, it's January twenty-eighth, but that's still not, we're, that's, it's up in the air.
January.
Okay.
Well, because, yeah, there's some controversy over that. That was what we were told, that that's their window of opportunity. So they're, we're supposed to have ten days prior to the end of the month. Well, they're saying it's twenty-eighth, well, twenty-eighth is not the, ten days before, so it's, they're telling us now that we only have two days to do all this.
Oh, to do the reporting.
Yeah, so it's like, so anyways, we're, we're finding out about it, some more about it, but right now, that's what we've been told, it's the twenty-eighth.
As soon as you get a date.
Yeah, I'll get you that, because it, there's no way it could be done in two days.
No.
When you have to go out in the field and they're scattered everywhere now.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's, yeah, so, anyway, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you. Mine's short and sweet as well. I attended, we had a meeting with, regarding the ten days of art, remember I told you about that, that was started last year, and they had the chairs downtown that they painted? And they were, they were asking people to guess what it was. It was actually, and, and it came from the old police department, a lot of those chairs. And it was about the county seat. And then they made, they made, they painted, they did beautiful artwork on the chairs, so that was really cool. Well, this next year, it'll be a, a little different theme, but it's going to be countywide. But Connie Meek is the chair of that, and she's just doing an outstanding job.
No pun intended.
No pun intended, she is not, she, oh, I thought you meant Meek, she's on, she's very sweet. Anyway, so, anyway, I attended, that was a great meeting, and, and we're working with the Siskiyou Arts Council as well as Liberty Arts and, and some local artists. Anyway, so that was interesting.
May I ask a question a minute? Can anybody participate?
Of course.
Oh, why?
Well, they have to, they have to call Connie.
I'll call Connie.
Because this is Connie's committee, and she put it together.
Okay.
But I think that she would love to have anyone that's interested in, in the arts and who would like to help.
Well, I paint a little bit.
You do paint? Oh, no, you paint houses. Anyway.
I do stick people. Wait a minute.
Stick people, me too, that's about it. And anyway, yeah, it's, it's, I believe it's open, but call Connie. I have her number if you need it, and also, of course, the pool grant. But I was at a, a local downtown business here today, this afternoon, and I was so pleased, brand-new business just opened up, as you know, The Thoughtful Nest on Minor Street, and they have had a wonderful season. So they are thrilled, they are happy, and they, they say that they feel so blessed to be supported by the community.
Good.
So that's, that's a really good thing.
Good.
I always like to see happy businesses. So I told them that, I asked their permission to mention that tonight, and they were, they were happy to share that information with everybody. So other than that, I'm with Paul, I want to thank you all for, for the year. I think we've had a good year. I mean, we've always had our ups and downs, but we thank all of you, thanking our staff, as well as the people that come to every meeting. Thank you, guys, thank you, Chief, and your crew too, because I think, I really do think it's been a good year. We've had some interesting times, some trying times, but basically, I think that we have, so Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mention about Shop With The Cop and Ray Booton.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, he's on TV.
We have got to thank Ray Booton and the chief here, because they did an outstanding job. Paul and I attended last Wednesday night, not this, not yesterday, but last week, the Shop With The Cop, and what a great program, Chief. You guys did such a good job.
It was.
There were a record number of kids, there were like forty-one kids, I think, which is the most that they've had in the three years they've been doing it. Lots and lots of support from the community, sponsors, and I think all the agencies were covered, right? All the police agencies were there.
Fifty-five officers.
Fifty-five.
From everything from Forest Service to IPD and everything in between.
So thank you to you, thank you to Sergeant Booton, and it was, thank you for reminding me.
Was Ray, like an Officer of the Year, Police Officer of the Year?
Was Ray Booton the Officer of the Year?
No.
No? I thought I read something about that, too.
We do have a peace officer of the year in March, so March of this last year was Aaron Smith, Aaron Smith Department.
I thought he was voted by one of the.
There was something I read on it.
Yeah, there was something in the paper, he was voted.
Oh, that's what it was, voted on the, the.
The newspaper voted them in.
That's still a big honor, though.
Aaron, Aaron was our officer of the year, and he, he was actually captured by somebody that was driving by, and he was shoveling snow out of his nice little.
Oh, that's nice, yes, yes, that's right.
The, what was it, the Siskiyou Best Of Siskiyou.
Yeah.
Best Of Siskiyou.
Best Of Siskiyou.
He, he got, he got voted.
That's what I want.
Police Officer of the Year.
And he went on every day and voted for himself.
That's right, that's right, you can vote over and over again.
Well, that's how you get in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, you get to want to vote once a day for, for six months, for the band that you want.
How many rock and roll, well, we do have a few rock and rollers, I guess, but anyway, anyway, thank you to you and Sergeant Booton and, and the police department.
It was a great, yeah.
And there were even some trainees there that are going to the academy, is it academy?
And a high schooler from Etna.
COS, and Etna had explorers.
Yeah.
Excuse me, was he going to give the report?
Are you going to give a report?
I was. Feel free.
I'm so sorry.
Well, I, I asked her to do it, we wanted to compliment you, and Ray. You guys did a great job out there.
Yes, very good job, very, very good job, and now it's time for your report.
Yeah.
Uh, three things, one was the Shop With The Cop, we had a great time.
It was great. Happy kids, happy parents, happy cops.
Everybody ended up really having a great time at night.
And good pizza.
And a lot of pizza, yeah, there was, there must have been twenty pizzas left over.
Oh, my.
Steve the clerk.
They were donated, I think.
Oh, yes, Steve donated from around here.
Awesome.
So three things, one, we're kind of on a one-year anniversary of being in the new police department. It was absolutely amazing to have a building that functions. There was a lot of work over the year. Even though the building was complete, there's a lot to moving in and making sure that everything, I mean, we almost had to drop plans to tell the employees how to use the building.
So modern, yeah.
When UPS comes, we're going to let UPS, and we're just going upstairs, deal with the.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, thank you guys again for that. I know I thank you guys all the time for it, but it's really a pleasure to go to a facility that functions.
It's beautiful.
The second thing is, we were involved in two really nice things towards the end of the year, and the holiday season one was, you noticed last month in November, our officers threw their beards out, and for a current policy, they're not allowed to gray, grow facial hair. So it's the one time a year that our guys get to grow their beard out, and they, every year, when it's December first, guaranteed there'll be one or two that come in and they'll still have it. Is this no shave December? And it's, oh, this is December, you know. But due to that awareness, a lot of people ask why our officers aren't shaved, and they raised up, we raised almost four thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
And it was donated to Devon Howard, a local.
Oh, good.
You know, going through a lot of tough times right now, so.
Yeah.
It was, it was a pleasure to do, and then, of course, that Shop With The Cop was very nice to end up here, so, thank you guys very much.
Have a, have a nice, hoping for a good year next year.
Great, good job, and a nice, and nice, quiet end of the year.
Well, we can go out with a bag, I don't like that.
Not literally, though.
No. Okay, well, thank you, Chief, and thank you for being here tonight. Anybody else, Matt? No? Liz? Rhonda?
Just one thing, we have cleaned up Cam's email, but it's not, you might still be, receive some spooking emails. It probably should be going to your junk folder, but please do not click on any, any enticing attachments.
I've noticed that they have clamped down, so it's, the security is higher within our email now, it seems.
Yes, we're trying.
That's good.
In that, but it's external to us now, but if you do see something, look twice, take some care.
Yeah, I was just reading, the city of New Orleans just got hit with the virus attack, shut down everything, the city of New Orleans a few days ago.
Wow, big city.
Yep.
We're not going to have that, right? Right, Rhonda? Not going to happen to us, no.
There's a spark, though.
All righty, well, I think then that we will adjourn the meeting, we're going to go into closed session. Thank you all for being here.